So, we will move on to item number three. I think Chief Gay has a presentation if we want to start with that and then we'll take public comment.
Mayor Protem and Council Chief Gay, I'm the Chief of Staff with the Austin Police Department. I know Chief Manley would have wanted to be here, but unfortunately, he's been called away to another meeting. I did want to address item three, which is to discuss THC testing and marijuana enforcement. Don't have a long presentation, but just some comments. APD's stance is that marijuana is still illegal under both state and federal law. APD has not increased our enforcement efforts, but we continue to either cite and release and/or arrest when it deems necessary. APD has been working, and the next topic, of course, is the Freedom Cities policy, and an update, but APD has a very robust cite and release, one that has received attention throughout the other members of the state and have modeled some of their policies under ours. We have been doing a little research regarding some cities and their enforcement efforts. Cities that are continuing their enforcement efforts for marijuana are Lakeway, Cedar Park, Maynor, Kyle, Hayes County, Flugerville, and some of the larger cities are San Antonio, Arlington, El Paso, and Fort Worth. We are aware of two cities who have ceased enforcement activities in regarding to marijuana, and that is the Travis County Sheriff's Office and the Round Rock Police Department. APD's stance is that we will continue our enforcement efforts. We believe that a non-enforcement position with no sanctions or violations will not make Austin safer. We believe that if there are no enforcement efforts, this would increase consumption, which would increase demand and increase supply. This could potentially increase in violent offenses and regarding to drug offenses such as home invasion, robberies, and just recently on July 17th of 2019, KXAN, who interviewed one of our homicide supervisors, said so far in 2019, seven of the city's 18 murders have involved drug deals. He said most all related murders involve marijuana. We also, our City of Austin, has a very vibrant entertainment district. We have several outdoor venues to where we believe that no enforcement with marijuana would have a negative impact on our entertainment district as well as these outdoor venues. In regards to the question in reference to where we are with the THC testing, our department has been working diligently with the Department of Public Safety. We have been working with the Texas Forensic Science Commission. We've had conversations with the DEA, who are all looking and developing protocols and procedures for the testing of Delta-9 THC. This was something that caught everyone somewhat by surprise, and so we believe that we'll have answers within six to 12 months in regarding to the testing for the quantification of THC. We have been in communications with the county attorney's office, who is currently rejecting POM charges, which means not accepting those charges at this time. Want to make sure, and we actually called him this morning to verify, to make sure that we would get this right, is that by rejecting the charges, he is not dismissing the charges. He is just not accepting them at this time. There is a two-year statute of limitations for possession of marijuana. Once we understand the time and the cost of testing, APD and the county will be in a better position to make decisions regarding future enforcement actions. So that is all my public comment at this time.
Do you have any questions for Chief Gay before we take public testimony? Do you want to ask Chief Gay any questions, Dan?
I have questions, but I can wait until my colleagues ask theirs as well.
I might have some, but then if there's testimony that may bring nuance to it, so I'd be happy to wait through.
All right, so let's go ahead and thank you, Chief Gay. We may call you back up. Let's do, I'm gonna, there's four chairs up at the front, so I'm gonna read out four names. If y'all all come and sit down, then we can go through this pretty quickly. Emily Garrick, Paul Quincy, Nikita Ved, and Bradley Hargis. Be able to take those four chairs. We don't normally take this much public comment at a committee meeting, so I would really ask you to try and limit your comments as much as possible. Unlike a council meeting, we can't stay in this room forever, all night long. There is a Public Safety Commission meeting here at four, so we want to be expedient as possible as we can through this testimony, and I see that every speaker has, some speakers even have donated time, so we will just do the same three minutes, two minutes for donated, but please don't think you have to use up all that time or repeat everything everyone else has said before. Hopefully, we can move this fairly quickly. Ms. Garrick.
Thank you, Chair members. My name is Emily Garrick. I'm a senior staff attorney at the Texas Fair Defense Project. I spoke to you last week about this issue. So, on June 10th, HB 1325 went into effect, and while marijuana is still illegal, as Chief Gay said, it's completely unenforceable at this point because there is only one lab in the entire state that can test for THC levels, and the district attorney and the county attorney have both said that they'll no longer be accepting cases for possession of marijuana. Despite this, the Austin Police Department is still citing people and even arresting people, which is a violation of Freedom Cities policy, for possession of marijuana, and they're pursuing test accreditation and machines, even though that costs lots and lots of money. Machines alone are hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it's just a tremendous waste of resources, especially given that we have such a serious backlog for serious crimes, as you'll hear more today. We have three asked for Austin City Council. First, we think that Austin Police Department should stop citing and arresting people and enforcing for possession of marijuana, especially given that these cases are not even being accepted. It's just a really bad waste of resources. And two, we think that City Council should commit to not using any resources, committing to not pursuing accreditation, using staff resources, or buying these expensive machines or any machines to test for THC. This is just not a priority for Austin. And three, to formally change APD policy so that they're no longer using the odor of marijuana as justification, probable cause for searches and seizures and detention. I just have, I passed out a fact sheet with some statistics. I think the first one just goes to the racial disparities of possession of marijuana. Black people in Travis County are 6.5 times as likely to be jailed for possession of marijuana as non-Hispanic whites, and so this does affect communities of color a lot more than other groups. Two, 84% of all Texans, and again, this is Texans, not people in Travis County, which I imagine would be much higher, think that marijuana should be decriminalized in some way. So there's not really a demand for this. It's not a public safety threat. People don't want this to be criminalized. And three, beside this, possession of marijuana in 2018 was the third most common misdemeanor booking in Travis County. And you'll hear more about the impact of what possession of marijuana enforcement does. One of the things that I just want to highlight is the impact of having a warrant for possession of marijuana. You cannot go to the DMV, to DPS, to get your driver's license or get an ID, so that really inhibits you from finding housing, finding employment. As you all know, even just a short time in jail will also lead to really bad consequences for people, especially low-income people and immigrants and people of color. And also, I just wanted to highlight that people with a possession of marijuana conviction cannot get public benefits, many public benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrick. Mr. Kinsey.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Hit the button on the thing there. There you go. You got it.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Council members. My name is Paul Quincy, and I've been practicing criminal law in Austin for the past 17 years. Throughout that time, I've seen people being saddled with arrest and criminal records and the wasting of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money on marijuana cases that have always been prosecuted with a wink and a nod, and that today are being summarily rejected by the prosecutors' offices. Now we have an opportunity to end this trade once and for all, if only APD will choose to go backward rather than forward. In the beginning of the aughts, when I was a prosecutor, the standard plea bargain offer was to reduce a personal use of marijuana case to a Class C misdemeanor with a fine. That at least made sense because the county and city would get some money behind it. Later, the prosecutors would dismiss the case upon completion of a drug education program. Now, these lenient outcomes would take place only after the person had been arrested and given a public criminal arrest record. Eventually, we got the cite and release policy, which also created arrest records a few weeks after the citation. Then for the past two years, we've had a true marijuana diversion program, which allows many, but not all, people to settle their cases without an arrest record. But as of June 10th of this year, because of HB 1325, these cases are being dismissed before they're even filed, or rejected before they're even filed. Given this trend of ever-lenient prosecution, up to the current policy of no prosecution, it makes less and less sense for APD to devote resources to the enforcement of possession of marijuana. The probable cause used to justify the search in most of these cases has been the odor of marijuana under the plain smell doctrine. Simply put, the plain smell of contraband like marijuana justified the search of a person or automobile. But now that the legislature has seen fit to legalize hemp, the odor of marijuana, which is indistinguishable from legal hemp, cannot be used to justify a search on its own. APD agrees with this assessment and has issued a training bulletin to its officers to that effect. Despite the bulletin, however, my colleagues have found that people are still being cited and even arrested for POM, where the odor was a justification for the search. Conducting a search based on the odor of a legal substance, therefore without probable cause of a crime, is a serious violation of a person's Fourth Amendment protections against illegal search and seizure. Because this training bulletin has not been sufficient, this concept should be formalized in APD's policy manual with the attendant sanctions for violating the policy. This combined with the fact that marijuana is indistinguishable from legal hemp to the naked eye, this gives us an opportunity in Austin to stop wasting time and resources on cases that are simply being dismissed anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kinsey. Ms. Ved. You got it. The light, so those of you speaking, the light happens up here, not down here, so when you hit the button, you want to look for the light at the microphone.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Nikita Ved, and I'm here on behalf of the Safe Alliance. We're an Austin-based nonprofit whose mission it is to stop abuse for everyone. I'm a licensed attorney and the Senior Director of Legal Services with the Safe Alliance. I'm here to request that the city prioritize funding and resources to public safety-related programs and services, specifically those that support survivors of violence. The Safe Alliance serves those who have experienced child abuse, domestic and sexual violence, stalking, and human trafficking. Our clients regularly face challenges accessing basic needs such as housing, employment, or even food, because it's not safe for them to do so. Programs such as the Bridge for Safety offer direct financial support to victims to try and address this gap. These survivors are working through trauma and trying to regain their self-worth. For our clients who have the added burden of a criminal offense charge, this access to basic needs and safety becomes that much more difficult. I regularly hear from clients that have low-level, nonviolent misdemeanor charges, including violations of marijuana possession, that are unresolved, either through fines or fees or active warrants due to a failure to appear. Almost every client that I have spoken to said that they have not been able to resolve this due to safety concerns, financial indigence, or both. Clients who have been arrested even for these lower-level misdemeanor offenses, regardless of if it results in prosecution, is an obstacle for anyone. However, for survivors of violence, this can be paralyzing in their route towards safety. The Safe Alliance does not ask incoming clients about their criminal history. These clients choose to share this with us when they want to access services. For example, clients are worried about their ability to receive medical services after a sexual assault for fear that police involvement would instead lead to their arrest. Clients may also be afraid to file for divorce or custody of their child because that abusive party knows about these criminal charges. The victim advocacy community recognizes that many survivors are forced into substance abuse by their abusers or their traffickers as a means of control, and we also understand that survivors sometimes use these as unhealthy coping mechanisms to deal with the abuse or the violence that they've endured. This can lead to things like excessive alcohol consumption or even drug use. So it's safe, we offer these clients our services and help them work through trauma in a healthy way. All of us here today have a common goal. We want to make Austin a beautiful and thriving city. To achieve that goal, we need our residents to be self-sustaining, successful, and able to contribute positively to our community. We cannot ask our residents to do that unless they feel physically safe. We ask that the city continues to prioritize funding and resources to those programs and services that result in a safer Austin for everyone. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Ved. Mr. Hargis.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Council members. My name is Bradley Hargis, and I am Deputy Director of the Capitol Area Private Defender Service. We oversee indigent defense for Travis County. So when someone is entitled to a court-appointed attorney over 20,000 times a year, one of those attorneys currently works for us or one of the small PDs. I'm here to talk about the expense to the criminal justice system. I could go on all day, as many of my colleagues, about the individuals and to the larger societal cost of low-level drug, but I will focus my comments today in a very limited time on just the cost to the criminal justice system here in Travis County. Right now, today, there are over 790 possession of marijuana cases remaining on the Travis County docket. That's despite all the efforts you've heard about, despite the lack or stopping cessation of the active enforcement or the refusal of charges. There still remains 790 cases on the docket today to be dealt with. For those people that are showing up repeatedly to court as their cases progress through the criminal justice system, they will be exposed to many days' lost work. They will be exposed to coming to court, engaging in programs and services in order to get their cases dismissed. Travis County will spend considerable money on this. In FY18, Travis County paid $227,000 to court-appointed attorneys in marijuana cases, or the cases that go along with marijuana cases. That excludes any other type of criminal offense. Those are for arrests that had marijuana involved only. In FY19, the diversion programs you've heard about have reduced that, but still even, so far this year, Travis County spent $148,000 on those cases. And to give you an idea of that, Travis County pays $275 to an attorney to resolve those cases. Some basic math will show you there are still thousands of cases winding their way through the system. So, the last thing I would like to address is the ongoing success and failure, the gap left in the cite and release program. The current cite and releases that Chief Gay has talked about that are stacking up, and even the current program that allows clients to appear at JP5 and have their cases truly diverted, depend on those clients having the wherewithal and the ability and the willingness to engage in those programs. Where we come into play these days is when those clients haven't made those court dates, haven't made those appearances, or my greatest fear is if at some point in the future, APD and Travis County do move forward with prosecuting these hundreds or thousands of cite and releases that are building up, summonses will go out, and for those people who don't understand, are unable to be contacted, or unwilling to engage in that, the normal course in the criminal justice system issue warrants. We have thousands of warrants going back decades for marijuana cases in Travis County. All of those people will be arrested and brought to court at some point in the future, unless we do something else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hargis. Thank you for speaking. Our next four speakers, Cree Crawford, Annette Price, Jaclyn Finkel, and Latrice Cook.
Yes, sir. I'll be very succinct. First of all, thank you all so much for being here today. My name is Cree Crawford. I'm the COO and the President of Ionization Labs, and we are simply here to say that if you are looking and the city is going to purchase any testing equipment, that we're here as a cost-effective and accurate solution. And I want to thank the last four people that spoke, and I'm going to thank these people here speaking as well, from a personal standpoint, but that's all I want to say, is we are here, and we'd like to be considered that solution if you choose to go that direction. Thank you.
Thank you for being succinct, Mr. Crawford, Ms. Price.
Good afternoon, Council members. My name is Annette Price, and I reside in District 10, and I work at Grassroots Leadership. And I'm here as a concerned city community member. I want to share how one arrest will affect the person for the rest of their life. When a person is arrested, their entire life stops. If they are the breadwinner for their family, that income stops. If they, they also run the risk of losing employment, they run the risk of losing housing, and even being cut off from public benefits, not to mention run the risk of losing childcare. And this conviction will hinder them for the rest of their life as well. APD is still arresting POCs for possession of marijuana. And what are we saying to the community? Now we want to risk some funding that will be wasted on some testing. Again, what are we saying to the community, and how are we really allocating our money that best serves our community? When APD has these arrests, who are they arresting? What does the data show? The data show you that the majority of these arrests are still POCs, that's people of color. And we do not want to send that message out in our community that we're going to still arrest folks, African-American people, for low-level arrest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Is Kathy Mitchell here? Is Kathy in the room? All right, Ms. Finkel, you have three minutes.
Did you say Finkel?
Yeah. I did, didn't I?
All right, I can see the light. Thank you. My name is Jaclyn Finkel. I am a resident of District 10 as well, and I'm the Executive Director for the Austin Chapter of the National Organization for the Reform of Marijuana Laws. I know that there's a lot of people talking about a lot of different subjects, so I'm going to narrowly stay in my lane. I have a handout that I've provided for you guys with some recent polling. The first one that you'll see there is the UT Texas Tribune poll from June of 2018. It sounds that, it shows that 84% of Texans support a change in our current marijuana law here in Texas, and it drills down to show you further that 69% of these strongly support decriminalization. If you look at the polling online, you can actually look at how it breaks down between different political groups, age groups, and through the races as well. Of note, because it does break it down by political party, we know that the Democratic platform does have support for reducing penalties, but it's also of note that the Texas GOP platform endorses possession of an ounce or less to only be a civil penalty of $100, and that passed with over 80% of the Republican vote in their state convention. I also wanted to note that the legislators that sit and represent us at the Capitol in the Austin area supported, authored, and voted for different legislation that would reduce penalties for possession. They also have successfully campaigned on these issues over at least the last two election cycles. And if you guys have any questions, my contact information is at the bottom. Please feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Latrice Cook? Oh, great. Ms. Cook, why don't you join us right here, and you can provide your testimony?
Good afternoon.
Press the button on the, there you go. Got it.
Good afternoon. My name is Latrice Cook. I'm the Executive Director and Founder for Mel's Center here in Austin, and I just want to say that I was sitting outside because they wouldn't let us in, and so we were sitting there, and I didn't hear my name being called. But I'm sitting here as a person who provides services for people that have previously been incarcerated in their families, and I just want to say that it is important that we not expend any more funds into anything that has to do with arresting persons for possession of marijuana. It is a waste of resources, and people that have been incarcerated, or even people that have not, that the stress of having a warrant over your head automatically can lead to a new offense, which the APD loves to give for evading arrest, which many people will do in the event that they feel like they have a warrant of this nature over their head. And so I sit here as a person who deals with people that have things that are pending like that over them with the City of Austin, that have a sense of paranoia that puts them in harm's way of the possibility of committing a new offense. And so I just want to say that, you know, there are better ways to spend our resources. There are entities in this community that are trying to help empower and successfully reacclimate people back into our communities. And so I think that this is something that, I understand APD's position about saying that there could be a possibility of more violence and this, that, and the other if a person is with marijuana, but that is probably a farce since many people that are in professional positions smoke weed on a regular and consistent basis, and so they're not violent, and I don't feel like people, the black, especially black men, who are very much targeted for this particular crime, that this is something that we really need to look at, not continuing to enforce at this point. And any people that are currently with warrants, that these warrants should be abolished and allowed for people to start with a clean slate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Our final two speakers are Nick Hudson and Chris Harris. Mr. Hudson, why don't you start?
Thank you, Chair, finally, and Council members. My name is Nick Hudson. I'm here on behalf of the American Civil Liberties Union of Texas. I'm just here to ask the members of this committee to do what you can to ensure that we don't waste money on marijuana testing, on expensive laboratory equipment, and accreditation, and training, and the staff required to test marijuana for the new legal levels under the law. We wanted to ask you to do that for a few reasons. One, we shouldn't use our valuable resources to double down on the failed war on marijuana that targets communities of color. More than one-third of the people who were arrested for marijuana possession by Austin Police Department in 2017 were black, despite the fact that only about 8% of the people in our city are black, and study after study shows similar marijuana usage rates between racial and ethnic groups. Spending money on testing will likely mean that racially disparate enforcement of our marijuana laws and targeting of communities of color will continue. Second, there are just better things to spend our money on, things like expanding community health paramedics, and investigating serious crimes, and boosting the EMS budget to allow them to be the primary responders for more mental health calls. Third, even short jail stays in, even short jail stays can negatively impact public safety. When someone is arrested, starting at the 24-hour mark, we can detect effects of collateral consequences of incarceration that are actually bad for public safety. Recidivism rates go up once people are released after short jail stays for low-level offenses. Failure to appear rates go up once the person is actually released. So this is likely because jail is destabilizing. A lot of people in jail are barely making it, and jail can interrupt employment and education and housing. It can lead to deportation, and it can even impact the custody of people's children. So, if more people are incarcerated from marijuana possession because we spent the money on testing, there will be more families and communities in Austin that are less stable. And for those reasons, we wanted to ask that you lead the effort to prevent the expenditure on accreditation and testing and those types of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Mr. Harris.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So, you've heard about how popular marijuana decriminalization is as a concept across the entirety of the state of Texas, and that obviously is not including specifically Austin, where we can be sure that that concept is even more popular. And so I really want to, I don't want to harp on the opportunity that you all have, honestly, to do something that's both very popular as well as save resources here in the community, as well as is going to end something that is desperately impacting people of color, particularly black people in our community. You heard Chief Gay say that the offices, the department is working diligently with various agencies to attempt to determine how to resume a testing regime here within our city. All of that is wasted resources. Why is the Austin Police Department putting man-hours, working diligently in order to resume a testing regime that the state has interfered with and basically placed an unfunded mandate upon local governments to resume in order to make something illegal that the vast majority of your constituents do not believe should be criminalized? That's just for the accreditation process. We're not even talking about potential future investments in new machinery and equipment, which again, why would the City of Austin, to cover up for the state's mistake, invest our very precious local resources, especially given impending revenue caps, in enforcement of making something, again, illegal that the vast majority of your constituents don't believe should be criminalized? When we think about the overall enforcement itself as well, we can see the amount of time and effort, energy, not just within our police department, but on our courts and our county infrastructure, in order to maintain this system of criminalization, which again, due to the state's mess-up, is now something that cannot be enforced, and again, the majority of your constituents do not believe should be enforced. And so, strongly encourage you not to invest any time or resources in resuming a testing regime because of the state's mess-up, an unfunded mandate. Strongly urge you not to pursue any testing equipment that, one, is going to, again, waste our precious public resources, made even more precious by red When we think about the overall enforcement itself as well, we can see the amount of time and effort, energy, not just within our police department, but on our courts and our county infrastructure in order to maintain this system of criminalization, which again, due to the state's mess-up, is now something that cannot be enforced. And again, the majority of your constituents do not believe should be enforced. And so strongly encourage you not to invest any time or resources in resuming a testing regime because of the state's mess-up, an unfunded mandate. Strongly urge you not to pursue any testing equipment that, one, is going to, again, waste our precious public resources, made even more precious by revenue caps, to prosecute something or potentially prosecute something down the line on the folks that are receiving those tickets now and who may unwittingly become subject to criminal enforcement at a later date. And again, when you think about what enforcement, continued enforcement means in terms of who is actually being enforced against, as far as people of color in our community, it's just patently unfair as well. And I will say lastly to a couple of the other points that the Assistant Chief made, there is no evidence that decriminalization of all various types, all the way up to and including legalization, leads to any increases in criminal activity of any kind, whether violence, whether drug use, or drug sales. And so I disagree with their reasons for continuing enforcement. You see other agencies are not enforcing, and I encourage you all to stop enforcement here.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. So that brings us back to the four of us. Chief Gay probably should come back to the microphone. Questions, thoughts? Who wants to chime in? Greg?
Hi, Chief.
Yes, sir.
So to start with the questions around odor, which we, I think, with some of the early testimony. So we have a, so we have a training bulletin out stating that now with the state law change, odor of hemp or marijuana is no longer probable cause for a search in and of itself. Is that, is that where we are?
You are correct. We have put out a training bulletin that says the odor of marijuana can be used as a building block to, with additional things that would build upon the probable cause. But marijuana alone is not the probable cause, which in the past was.
And is the, and part of the testimony that we got was that there have been defense attorneys, and I think at least one case has been forwarded to me where it's not clear whether odor of marijuana was probable cause in and of itself or not. Is there a reason? What is the reason for having something in a training bulletin versus a general orders? And is there a process that would be useful for having it in the, in the general orders?
We definitely can put things in our general orders. But our training bulletins are also something that we have to abide by, which is the training that we put forth for our officers. Once we're made of those particular issues, we do look into those issues and take the appropriate corrective action as necessary.
And so there isn't... So what is the difference then of having something in a training bulletin versus in the general orders? What's the substance of difference?
A lot of times we put out specific training bulletins to quickly get the information out regarding changes in procedures. Even though something may be a general order, we still potentially push out training bulletins. But we do have a general order that says that our officers do have to abide by their training.
So your next update of the general orders, if things still are where they are with the state law, that might be one of the regular updates that you, that you make? That might be something... The training bulletin is because this happens quickly. But as you update your general orders, as you do regularly, this might be something that you incorporate. But it wouldn't make a difference one way or the other, discipline-wise?
Correct, because we do have to follow our training. Correct. But it may be something that we feel necessary to drive the point in a general order. Yes, sir.
Got it. I only have a couple more questions for now. One is sort of on the purchase process for testing equipment. You said that that's a six, that could be, that could be six months out?
In reference to developing the procedures, I do know that there are, there's equipment out there currently that we're looking into to build in some redundancy for opioid-type testing and K2 testing, which is the same type instrument that would be needed for marijuana testing as well.
But it, but it, so it's not just the purchase of the machines, but it's also the accreditation process for our, for our own staff to be able to use those machines for this, for the hemp versus marijuana distinction?
Correct, the validation studies, yes, sir.
So that's what six, that's what six to 12 months out would be the, making sure we have a, figuring out what the process is for our own staff?
Absolutely.
And but the machine purchase itself, what's the, what's the timeline that the police department is looking at?
Well, we currently do have one machine. Of course, if it goes down today, we would not be able to test, test our opioids, or we would not be able to test K2. So we, we always try to build in redundancy. So the current machine that we do have could test for THC, but does require the lengthy validation studies and develop the protocols and procedures for that particular testing of THC.
But currently, we aren't using it to test for THC because we don't have those protocols and because we probably have lots of other things that that machine is spending its time testing right now.
Absolutely.
And then, so currently, what is happening most likely is somebody receives a citation and the marijuana or hemp is confiscated. Is that right?
Correct.
And but, and then that citation is then sent to the county, who then rejects the charges for now, and the person then gets a notification that they should not come to, should not come to court?
I would have to validate because the citations go to JP5, and then those are arrested or handled by the county attorney.
Yeah. My, my understanding really briefly from the JP there is that they'll send a notification that you hopefully get to let you know not to come. But do we, so my understanding is that these citations are largely then turning into letters telling you not to come to court. But then in some cases, you are arrested if it fits within one of the provisions in our cite and release policy for arrest?
Correct.
Got it. I get, I had one, one last question. Oh, yeah, is, is for confiscation, so when you, when somebody gives you a citation, police officer gives you the citation, the hemp or marijuana is confiscated, is citation or arrest required for that confiscation?
No, sir. You can take it for either, both the arrest or the citation.
But, but I'm saying in the case where there is neither citation or arrest, is, is either citation or arrest required for confiscation? Is one of the two required?
No, it is not. But it is an illegal product, so we wouldn't leave it on the street.
Right, you would, you would confiscate it one way or the other. I imagine that there's even cases where, where an officer confiscates something and then is, and then is called, taken onto another call and doesn't even get around to citing someone.
I would agree with that, yes.
Councilmember Madsen?
I wanted to ask you, first of all, can you pronounce the, pronounce the, the machine? The, the name of the machine? Spectra Tetrametra?
You, I, I can't pronounce it very well either. It's the LCMS.
But that machine that we're referring to, would it be used to make the differentiation between THC and CBD?
Yes, in reference to THC levels, yes.
Okay. And then I'd also like to know whether or not the results from testing would be sufficient evidence for cases to be prosecuted?
Yes, if we did get the quantification, the machine that would allow us to quantify THC, that would be accepted as a lab report that those cases could move forward.
Thank you.
Representative Tim?
Oh, do you have the demographic information on the, I believe there were 627 citations for possession of marijuana misdemeanor? Do you have the demographics on?
I do. Are you, for 2018?
Yes.
Of the 627 cite and release, 268 were Hispanic or Latino, 228 were black, 122 white, three Asian, four Middle Eastern, and two unknown. I do have the breakdown for 2019 year-to-date. That is a total of 290 cite and release, 130 Hispanic or Latino, 106 black, 52 white, one Asian, zero Middle Eastern, and one unknown.
Okay. And then the, what is the, like, I'm trying to think of the cost to the city of enforcing something like this. So it's my understanding that the police officer has to do like a probable cause affidavit and then all kinds of other paperwork. Do you know what the, I guess the percentage of time that an officer during their shift would have to, would use if they, if they cited somebody for possession of marijuana?
I do not know the particular time. But of course, a cite and release is, is very quick. You do have to confiscate the marijuana, which a cite and release is, wouldn't take that much time. In reference to, I do have the arrest data or an approximate arrest data for 2018 is that there were approximately 1,800 arrests for marijuana, possession of marijuana. I want to note that most of those had multiple charges. There were only 300 or a little more than 300 arrests with a single charge. So of the possession of marijuana charges that, that we had for 2018, the majority of those had multiple other offenses the person was arrested for.
Okay. And then you, you mentioned the concerns about public safety concerns, and that's why the chief believes we should still be enforcing this. And you, there was a statistic about, I guess, homicides. Do you know of those seven, if any of those, you said that there was marijuana involved? If any of those were, or of those, how many were of less than four ounces?
I can get that information for you.
Okay. And then the, you mentioned that Round Rock and Travis County sheriffs have, are the, are the two jurisdictions that are no longer giving tickets or arresting? Do you know if their violent crime has increased or crime has increased in those jurisdictions since they're not enforcing?
I do not know just yet because it was a recent change, and we'll have to look. But their dynamics and their, their city is made up a little bit different. I mean, we definitely have more events. We have an entertainment district, which is a little bit different makeup than what Round Rock or even the Travis County would, would have.
Sure. And do you think, and I know you can't speak for the chief, but if there, if, you know, three months down the road, we're able to get information that, you know, in fact, violent crime hasn't increased in these, in these jurisdictions that are no longer enforcing this. And if the information presented about the seven homicides is in fact what didn't involve less than four ounces, which is, you know, I think, as someone has pointed out, the majority of Texans in the country believe that that at least should be, should not be criminalized. Do you think, if those are the biggest concerns, do you think there is room to change that policy? If we no longer have the public safety concerns that maybe we thought were going to be there?
Absolutely. I think our department has always, continues to be flexible. I think our juvenile curfew was one that pointed to that, is that the evidence pointed that there was not an increase in juvenile crime or victimization. In essence, when we did the research, it was opposite. We are definitely working with the Texas Chiefs Association and monitoring. But again, this is a very recent change. We need to monitor current activities, well as activities around the state of Texas. But we definitely would be willing and looking at being very, I think we are a progressive department that is always looking to do the best for our community. But ultimately, we want our, our community to be safe. I know that we have ACL coming up, so we have concerns. But one thing in regards to testing is that I know there's been comments regarding not wanting to allow us to purchase the equipment. Is this equipment is, is, has to be used also for felony cases. So, I mean, those cases are ones that we believe we would want to test and we would want to pursue charges on. So the same equipment would be used, whether it was a high level or a low level of quantity and the different charges that would be filed.
Well, I appreciate you saying that there could be flexibility in, in changes to this policy. You know, as we, as we go into our budget, you know, discussions, and tomorrow we'll have some more, and we, and we learn about limited resources and the need that has been expressed to us for more police officers. It's just concerning that we have our police officers spending time enforcing something and writing probable cause affidavits and, you know, citing for what, what is an issue that many states have decriminalized? Many states have, you know, reversed their policies on this kind of what was considered a crime. And so I look forward to continuing this conversation because I'm really concerned about what it feels like wasted a resource time. And I understand from your perspective, the public, the public safety aspect of it. But I hope that if data comes to us that shows us that this is in fact not creating any more violent crime, then we can revisit this.
Absolutely.
So just a couple of things. The, talking about crime that is occurring now, where there's the presence of marijuana is not sufficient, I think, for the, for the question at hand, because it's not clear, as the Mayor Pretim kind of said, that that had anything either to do with the crime or that it wasn't a felony level or felony matter. I mean, there's just a lot of complexity, especially when you're talking about a number like seven, where it's almost not even a statistically relevant number with which to draw conclusions. I'm also curious about the use of the chromatograph mass spectrometer. I'm guessing is how that's said.
That sounds good.
Whether or not that's the type of device whose utilization would be so high that it would solely be used by APD, or if this is something that should be purchased in partnership with the county, or if it's something that maybe is a cap cog asset that could be used regionally. If we're testing only amounts over a certain level, then maybe this is a regional asset we can share with some of our partners. That's something I would like to know more about. I mean, I do acknowledge that there's more than just THC to be tested. But it makes me wonder exactly how much work is there to be done? And might we be thinking about this regionally as we think about equipment? And then the last question for me is my understanding that the cite and, cite and release policy has a specific state law provision that says that you can only do that if you are, if you are in the county of your own residence?
Correct.
So for Austinites who live in Williamson County, they can be pulled over by an APD officer in their own city. But because they live in Wilco, they're going to be treated differently as required by state law. Is that right?
Correct. State law requires that that county set up provisions for cite and release, which Williamson County has not.
So it would be possible for APD to cite and release a Williamson County resident who is cited in Travis County if Williamson County were to sign on to that?
No, it has to be, the offense has to occur within the county. So it occurs in Travis County with a Travis County resident.
Right.
Since Austin is part of Williamson County, if someone lived in Williamson County and was stopped in Williamson County currently, because Williamson County does not have a cite and release program, they cannot receive a cite.
So even, even an APD officer in the city of Austin with an Austin resident in Williamson County can't cite and release?
Correct.
That's a problem for me. I, I'm very uncomfortable knowing that taxpayers in Williamson County are treated differently than taxpayers in Travis County by their own department. It's my understanding that kind of the way that Round Rock does it, where there's no citation, you cannot cite anyway, that that would be treated equally across all of our jurisdiction. If there was no citation, you could still take the material, but everyone would be able to be treated the same in a lack of citation scenario. Is that true with the way state laws? You can just not do a citation?
We could take it and write a report, absolutely.
Okay. So I, I mean, for, for a number of reasons, at least on my part, both the pragmatic reality of police resources and the costs, but also the fairness of treatment for all of our constituents across our entire jurisdiction. I don't, I don't know why we would continue to do cite and release in this case. Just as a, as a time check, we do have another item with speakers and a few more items after that. So hopefully we can, we can go pretty quick.
Then I'll, I'll be really fast. So just because some folks that may be watching saw that we purchased or authorized the purchase of a liquid chromatograph mass spectrometer last council meeting, can you just confirm for us really quickly that that is headed to toxicology and therefore is not in the drug seizure unit? It wouldn't, it's not for this purpose?
You are correct.
And that if there was any reason that we wanted to move it over, you would have to apply to the state to, to move it over because that's different than the terms of the grant?
You are correct.
And then I suspect that you guys would come and let us know if you were going to do that. But my sense is there's a lot to do in toxicology right now.
Absolutely.
Got it. Okay. So I think that this is still an open conversation, and I really appreciate you coming and answering our questions. One thing we didn't get to, but just for time's sake, we'll skip over, is I would be interested in what it takes to clear the warrants on these past cases. You know, I, I think some of the testimony here about folks having warrants over their heads for this long, whatever steps the city can take potentially in conjunction with the county to clear those, I think that would be, or to, to figure out the path to getting those dealt with would be really useful. And I concur here with my colleagues that if they're, that are potentially arresting someone for low-level possession of marijuana, for them to then potentially spend hours in jail, and then for the county to say, we're not... them to then potentially spend hours in jail, and then for the county to say, we're not actually taking these charges, and so you're free to go, seems, seems like we could be creating more problems, and potentially even public safety problems, than we're solving. And so thank you for the, for this committee meeting, and we'll just keep in touch with everybody as we move forward. So thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief Gay.
Can we just stay here for the next?
I think we're going to take testimony. Do you have a quick presentation first that you want to go through on Freedom Cities?
Only if you need it.
Do we, should we just go to testimony?